Okay, alright. Um, okay, so uh, let's go ahead and call this uh, council retreat for two zero twenty three to order. And uh, Judy, if you could call the role, please.
Yes, house.
I'm here.
So.
Here.
The queen.
Here.
Come on.
Here.
The goal leader.
Here.
Oh, the president, village manager, if I say something wrong. Solicitor in the life of ship, planning and administrative, these winter. My name is for the rain pepper. Hello, director Johnny Grubbs, and we are expecting chief birth.
Okay, thank you Judy, and uh, thanks everyone for being here. Um, I wanted to first of all, uh, note that a mission component of the agenda is a break. And we will have one. Um, so no later than three fifty five, we will break for fifteen minutes until four ten. Um, and uh, we will have to assess if uh, we have not gotten to everything we want on the goals. What we're gonna do about that. Um, also remind folks that uh, we often have a second part to our uh, retreats. We used to do a full day, um, but uh, you know, hopefully we'll cover a lot, alright? So I wanted to do before we dive into goals, um, a little bit of an intro. Um, and I guess I wanted to reiterate a point that was made in the memo that Judy and I provided at the last council meeting. Uh, was also in the packet for this meeting, uh, about um, what I think is really important that we continue to get better and better about aligning around village goals and moving away from thinking about it as council goals and staff goals. And uh, so I was really happy with um, the uh, items that we got from village team members. I think in different ways, it seems that everyone's moving in that direction. Um, but I think we all share in some major challenges. And so I don't think we're gonna be successful unless we are all collaborating. And we've got different components of how we achieve those goals. Um, and so I wanna sort of continue that uh, direction on listening. And that kind of made me think a little bit about, um, I think we've come off of a couple of years of uh, a lot of drama, a lot of divisiveness, a lot of toxicity, just at all levels of politics. Um, and uh, I think we, I'm seeing us do a better and better job of moving away from that. And um, you know, I can't help but reflect on Corkle. And every time I look at those principles, they, you know, I'm writing those words in the things that I'm thinking about. So, you know, beyond being results oriented, um, which I think we're really looking at with our goals. Um, you know, the collaborative piece, the open piece, uh, being able to talk about some of these hard decisions in a way that is authentic and genuine is very important. Um, as well as of course, being locally minded, being constructive, being empathetic. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're thinking about those things. And um, the way Corkle was, you know, came up was because we were having a lot of challenges several years ago with effective communications and, and working together. And uh, and I think all these really matter. So I wanted to uh, have everyone quickly, um, talk about two things. One thing that you think will help us be successful in achieving our goals for two zero twenty three. And I know we all have many things, but one thing. And then secondly, um, one thing you wanna see happen, get done in two zero twenty three, alright? So I'll go ahead and start. I've already said what I think is gonna make us successful, particularly being open with each other, um, and not defensive. And um, one thing I wanna see get done, what did I highlight here? Is um, I wanna see this piece under the first listed goal to explore and mock up affordable, our potential sites for affordable rentals. Okay? And uh, we'll popcorn this, so I'm gonna pass it to Gavin.
Okay, hey everybody, um, successful in twenty three. Um. Yeah, I don't know, transparent, clear communication, I guess. Um, and then uh, want to see get done. Getting to where we have a balanced budget, it feels like it's structurally sound and that we're on good footing for the future.
You pass it to.
Okay, sorry, pop, I'll just go to my.
Sure. Um, what I would like to see is council make and revise a very clear um, policy. And so that, to kind of ensure that we have that strong foundation moving forward with, you know, either some kind of volunteer initiative or whatever, um, we just need to make sure that we kind of tighten down on language, make sure it's concise and clear and easy to follow and understand.
Cool. And one thing we wanna get done, see happen?
A volunteer program.
Cool. Alright, who's next?
Oh, uh, Maryann. I would like to have more effective, clear communication between council and senior staff members. As well as village government and local office and businesses. So I would put that under more, more open and cooperative. Focus isn't the right word, exactly. Method, whatever the right word. Um, bigger letters. I would like to see a plan for some kind of housing initiative that, yeah. Plan for some housing, housing initiative that the village government participates in with whatever other agencies or businesses or organizations or needs to do that.
Cool.
Okay, uh, so I'm going to say Amy Kay.
Okay. I would love to see today that the strategic goals reflect some of our actual day to day goals. I think there's a gap, and I think what is on here is not what we're doing day to day. Um, and if we're gonna get some days done, it has become part of the day to day. Um, and then for two zero twenty three, I partly agree with Gavin, clear budgeting, clear financial picture, quarterly information that each.
Cool. Okay, who's next?
Amy, Heather Amy. So I'm probably the only person in the room whose sole goal is to make all of your goals happen, right? I mean, to, to be able to um, find a way to yes on things that maybe uh, we have to think creatively about or approach in a unique or different way. And I also, um, now that it's January, and I've been here four, five months now, right? Um, something that Maryann said, I, for two zero twenty three, I think I see more clearly here how important it is with each thing that comes before council to be sure that we know what um, any committee or organization or citizen group or whoever might be involved and have looked at it before what their input is on it. So for me, for two zero twenty three, I intend to try and look at everything through that lens, as for teaming it up together to put it in front of you.
Cool, who's next?
I'll go next, um, I guess piggybacking onto other people, just keeping the lines of communication open between staff and council would be helpful. Um, as far as projects, you know, I'm kind of winding down here, so I'd like to see, uh, I, I've got a lot on my plate to get ready for this new person. And there's a lot of things I do that really aren't reflected in the job description, so we're in the process of looking at, into updating that. And this person really needs to have some time here and to um, learn the job, so there isn't any gap. So that's my main thing, coupled with hopefully getting um, homing through the prelim and final part as well as um, D E C's final with council. Marriage should wrap us in the future.
Alright, good luck. Uh, who's next?
It's your three A M. Your three A M, where you want, so yeah.
Alright, you wanna pick somebody Denise?
Oh, Johnny. Well, I mean, you're all.
I wanna say staff, getting them all on board, getting them all trained. And then things that I'd like to see accomplished, um, this year, we'll probably be able to take time off and enjoy it.
Thanks, that's a great, great thing to happen this year, okay?
And let's all work.
Alright Johnny, so you gotta pick one of these three up, up here.
Oh, let's go with Judy.
Oh, thanks. Um, I agree with communication piece and to be even more specific about it, I really like the idea of the action plan stuff. The part for what Amy said, who, who should be involved, but we may not have included. Um, because I think when you work through those steps, it's a way to make sure, are we communicating with everyone? Did we get everyone's input here? Is it, is it getting done in the right kind of way? So I kind of like that, maybe we could use that format a little bit more for things that come to council table. Um, and um, my personal goal is to get all the way through January without a major disease disaster or shredding of attendants. So we're almost there.
A few more days.
Alright, fingers crossed, okay? Don't leave the house.
Well, we're gonna go the driveway.
Alright Judy, who's next?
Oh, it's fine.
Oh, thank you. Um, I think you guys hit on a lot of things that I would want uh, see done in terms of how the relationship management piece works. All the things that have been mentioned, open communication, transparency, clear policy, clear directives. All those things are related or inter needed for an effective organization. And just wanna reiterate that twenty two was probably the most challenging year to dive in here. Uh, and I, anything revolting to what happened in twenty twenty two would just, I feel that would break us in twenty three because I, it was very challenging. And so my aspirations for twenty three is that we are able to, for the, the staff and my team get clear direction with council. At times we think we're doing god's work in delivering for council to find out that we're not. That's a clear direction, collaboration and support. In terms of projects, what outcomes wanna do? Uh, it's so difficult because I think we have so many things that need to move forward at once. Um, but I think an, an enabling goal, uh, that we need for to accomplish is diversification of our economy, our local economy. And that's one way of, of saying we need a little bit of everything.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
So the, the survey that we did recently, there, there were several questions that, that I put at the bottom of that. Um, and it was really, I was really focusing on council members assessing ourselves. Um, things like, you know, we're, we're productive and things of that nature. So I, I wrote down a free decor. And what I mean by that is us as council members knowing each other. I feel like sometimes I'm the minority whip, trying to whip up votes for, for things. But I think if we, uh, I think there's a place we can be where we know what we can anticipate from one another. And there's more of a, again, I use the phrase a free decor or foxhole mentality where we can know, you know, what to expect from, from our team members. I think you, you can get a lot of mileage out of that. And I do apologize for not submitting uh, anything in writing earlier, I did, I just do something this morning. Um, and when I talked about there is, 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 I use a phrase, hard infrastructure, but I would just say infrastructure in general. So hopefully we get enough things taken care of so we're, we don't keep feeling like we've victimized by things being kicked down, down the road. Uh, deferred uh, maintenance so much. Um, and part of that, I, when I, when I say hard infrastructure, this is focused on things that Johnny's responsible for. When I say infrastructure in general, I just realized that municipal broadband could be low hanging fruit. We could really push if, if more than just the two or three of us that, that tend to push it, push it. If we really, I think elevated that, there's a lot that could be gained from that. Um, you know, Springsnet, the group has done surveys and I would submit, um, it's probably true that eighty percent uh, of the village residents pay some money that goes outside the village for cable and internet services. And there's one thing to levy a tax or raise a fee where folks can feel that difference. It's another thing to take the money that they're already spending and spending it on us. And I think there's, there's just lots of opportunities, you know, for, uh, you know, economic development. You know, schools can benefit, families from an equity perspective, and revenue, that's, that's, that's the part we don't think about much. But there's a big part of municipal broadband will be revenue to the village. And whereas we're struggling in some respects with revenue, I think that's, that's something if we put a little bit more effort into it, we get there very quickly and, and have a high adoption rate, et cetera. So it won't, won't go on, but um, again, primarily us being a more cohesive group regarding council. And um, again, getting, getting ahead of the curve on some of these infrastructure issues.
Alright, thanks Kevin. And chief urge is always good at being on the spot, so we're talking about one thing that will make us successful to achieve our goals this year and one thing you wanna see happen in two zero twenty three.
Alright, very good. Um, so I would say off the top of my head, the one thing I think would be, uh, what would contribute to my, our team's overall success would be collaboration. Um, collaboration among council, other staff members, all the way through to the citizens that we have in our community. So looking forward to working a lot of collaboration. Um, and then, uh, forgive me, what was the second part?
Uh, one thing you wanna see happen this year.
Um, well, I suppose you guys have seen my goals for this year, so that's a whole laundry list of things. So out of everything, um, if I had to choose one of those things I'd really like to see happen, it would be um, to have a, a solid, aggressive recruiting strategy in place to keep and maintain good, good people on our team.
Cool, thank you. Um, well, obviously a central theme is communications and collaboration related to that. And so I'm gonna continue to hold us all to it. Um, I think we're all ready to put two zero twenty two back, focus on two zero twenty three. When I was thinking about this retreat, I was actually really excited. I think council's gelling really well. I think we're getting better at open communications, uh, among the entire team, staff and council. And um, and again, you know, council's gotta be reminded about things. Um, so, you know, I think we've shown, I hope, that we're open to uh, constructive criticism. So uh, let's go ahead and get into the goals part. I wanna talk about how, uh, I, I wanna structure this based on everything that came in. So first of all, um, we're gonna start with uh, kind of a high level with this goals document, alright? And um, related to that, uh, I'll, I'll talk about, um, I guess a few things that I think have already been teed up. Um, like to hear from anyone, things that they have a problem with, that they think should be removed. Remember, we're not making any decisions to, uh, today, but um, we will be bringing forth a kind of final document for the uh, February sixth meeting. Also any revisions or additions. And um, I don't know that we need to totally drill down on priorities, but this document, I had started to underline things that I've heard people say they're gonna champion. And um, and so if there are other things like that, it would be good to hear. And this can kind of be sort of a free for all, like to limit that piece to about twenty five minutes, alright? So if there's some questions about this document, you know, uh, feel free to ask those as well. Um, but uh, overall, I'm gonna take what I hear, make any adjustments and bring that draft to the council meeting. That is where we'll make any final decisions, uh, maybe have some citizen comments as well. Uh, it sounds like there are a few things that, um, that people are gonna wanna comment on. Um, then we will go into the village team member reports that are in the packet. Um, and remember, we're trying to do kind of like five minutes, you know, so just kind of again, high level. Then we will go into the, um, the, the reports from council members that were in there. And if we have time after that, then we can talk about any other things on the sheet, alright? But I think that, you know, there, there's gonna be a lot there. Um, I'll talk about the second part of the meeting after the break, but for the most part, I think we're gonna go through the survey. And I think Maryann and Kevin are gonna lead us through that. And then whatever time we have remaining, right? Didn't we say?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Okay, what?
It'd be nice to have a copy of it.
Okay, we can get that, and we can get that at the break.
Yeah.
Um, okay, well, I thought we had talked the other day about just walking through the survey and uh, that would be a good structure.
Right.
So I, I can read that too. Um, okay, and then, you know, from there, we'll see what time we have left to talk about other things. So going back to the high level talk about the goals, I wanna make a few things clear about our goals. First of all, just because something is on the goal sheet doesn't mean that it's gonna transpire. This is, you know, these goal sheets, I mean, a lot of these have been around for years. And um, nothing's happened mostly because there hasn't been a champion. But I think what this document does do is it reflects that these are things that council members can take up, that uh, team members, staff can spend time on, but of course, that's gotta be coordinated through our village manager. And it's gotta be within reason, right? Like not any one uh, thing, that action item that a council member is championing can take over everything. Um, second thing I wanna mention is that all of these things still have to go through a public process, alright? We're not like, today we haven't decided this is all gonna happen, right? There still has to be a proposal, has to go through council, public comment, all of that. And I think that's really important for uh, everyone to remember. And thirdly, this doesn't mean that nothing else can happen except what's on the sheet, alright? We're trying to get better and better at avoiding adding things, but we know that things change. And so, you know, just keeping in mind, if there is something new, that certainly needs to come to council. We need to discuss it and, and make sure that it's something we, as a majority, agree should happen. Okay? So I'm gonna stop talking and um, this, this goal draft document's been around for a couple of months now. It's had a few minor revisions. And any feedback I got, like I got the volunteerism in there, uh, got a few other things that I heard from folks. Uh, but anybody that has any comments, let's uh, go. More questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can someone tell me, help me understand what would be in uh, a village affordability plan? I'm looking at the second goal.
Yeah.
And then one of the key action items is create a village affordability plan. Those are nice words, but I don't, I can imagine what that would look like and what would be in it, what guidance uh, might come from that.
Yeah, this is something that I talked about, um, I think mid last year. Um, and I've actually not had time to, to look at, alright? So um, I would imagine that, you know, it would talk about strategies around affordable housing, but it would go beyond that and it would incorporate things like the utility roundup, um, guaranteed income. So, and I think that the initiative in my mind, um, if somebody took it on would be to explore other things that we haven't thought of, other best practices, so. Alright, quick, yeah, yeah.
So Amy, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I, I thought, I think your question or comment about like the goals and their alignment with the day to day, I wonder if you could elaborate on that? Um, or if there are like, you know, notable buckets that, I, I feel like I could probably come up with some ideas, but if you wouldn't mind sharing what you were thinking about on that front? And because, just to be clear, that, that's what we're trying to do is figure out how to get staff and council goals. This is the whole thing and erect. And I think the feeling has been, this has been more of a council thing, so that seems appropriate to me, if you don't mind.
Well, I mean, honestly, I sat down and read this for the first time a week and a half ago. And I could not pick myself out, other than, you know, you want paid parking, I can do a pro forma for you. You know, I could do some research, but I couldn't pick out how, how my department moves this forward, other than, you know, we're doing broadband, so we're adding those people to the utility accounts, that kind of stuff. But it was really difficult for me to figure out how I improve finance in the village this way. So there's two different things I'm thinking. Cause I know there's a lot of things in the finance department that need to change and do, we do better and, and I've made a list of our goals, but they didn't necessarily translate to your goals. So I don't see, I, I see balanced budget, that's clearly us figuring that out, but it's not making it a more efficient village, or more, especially from the finance perspective, I think there's some things we can do to make our lives a lot easier, you know? So that's, that's, I struggled to comment on this because, you know, you, you want me to do research, absolutely have no problem doing that, but that's not what I do every day.
So you just said really quickly, um, I think there are some things that I can do. Can you give us an example of what those things might be?
Sure, I might jump in ahead.
I think it's okay.
Um, I have um, strategic goals for the finance department. And, and they're, uh, you know, big bullet points, Judy, this is in the packet, no? Yes, yeah. Okay. Um, just accounting completeness, we have some issues with, you know, structure and process that's not there yet. And so we're doing cleanup for two plus years, maybe three, five, I'm not sure. Um, onboarding, we have a lot of turnover right now, we got a lot of people coming online. We have a really hard time with not onboarding them, but getting that information into finance and making sure the payroll is great, right? And you don't mess with people's pay, it has to be a hundred percent right all the time, it's like your healthcare, right? Um, internal controls, we don't reconcile the billing software to the accounting software. And so I'm doing two zero twenty two year end, and I've got a laundry list of that hit the bank but never hit accounting, that hit accounting, never hit the bank, which doesn't, it's not material, but it doesn't make me feel good because we don't have it under our thumb that everything is where it should be right now, okay? Process efficiency, we do a lot of things like write checks to ourselves, we do utilities seriously, you know? How much does it cost to have a shell park that check, somebody take it to the bank, somebody deposit it, and then we reconcile it? It just makes no sense, so we're gonna try to fix that stuff. Um, the overpayments account is a big one. There's two hundred thirty four thousand dollars sitting in that account that we can't use right now because it's not in the right fund. It's not in the right enterprise fund, so we'll fix that. But those are, those are the things that I see urgency in that aren't here, I think we're answering. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I'll interject because I think that yours is a great example, and that's why I said I, I saw, I saw that, that we can just think a little bit differently and see the alignment. Um, so to me, your connection is achieve structurally balanced budget. And then all those action items, our goals or whatever, fit in there. And then I love hearing, and I can play a role if we do a paid parking plan and, and some of these other things. So that to me is the alignment, right? And so, cause I think there's still value in having kind of like a higher level one sheet. But then of course, right, for all departments, right? There are these, you know, very detailed kinds of things, which I really appreciate, I think we all appreciate seeing. Um, so anyway, but that's how, I guess that's how I think about it from your perspective, alright? So similarly, you know, for Johnny, and I think, I understand that they're kind of scattered, but there is like a bullet about storm, right? And there is a bullet about water, and there is a bullet about electric. And so, um, you know, I, I, I think it can be organized better, um, so that those like are highlighted. And then similarly, yeah, then Johnny, you've got all those details about, you know, how you're gonna make the water system better or whatever, right? I don't think those need to be on this sheet, right? So I, and actually, for the most part, I mean, that's what you guys do, right? It's not what council does, alright? Um, and then I can page, you did a great job of, you know, um, again articulating it and also attaching it to some of these pieces. So I appreciated that, and Denise, same thing, you know, you've got, you pulled out the like, exploring the zoning improvements and whatnot. Um, so I would just suggest, just kind of thinking about it's not that disconnected. whatnot, um, so I would just suggest, just kinda thinking about, it's not that disconnected, but I'm not sure that council's gonna be productive in terms of getting into the weeds, but recognizing that we prioritize those things, and then you guys know how, best how to do it. Yeah?
So I have a question and then a comment. So, under the agenda, you have bullet points, and for example, I did submit comments, so are you, we're gonna go down, and then I would have time?
So that's what I meant about, we're, once we do this high level, then we're gonna do staff, then we're gonna do you and Gavin.
So, I have a comment, uh, about, a number of us talked about collapse, the importance of collaboration, communication with staff and council and outside groups, so I think that if we look at, uh, the facilitate development of affordable market rate housing, all of those bullet points, including, um, utility improvement plan, strategic zoning, the Lawson place model, and then even bumping down into environmental sustainability, executing stormwater and sewer solutions, um, they could all, for example, if there were a committee, a task force set up to identify some, one housing initiative, it would be a collaborative opportunity to be working with Johnny on if there's gonna be a place, are the utilities up to speed, if not, can they get up to speed? So I think that, that's sort of an example of how there could be a collaborative opportunity within the village council, uh, as well as outside with whatever other organizations we would need to work with. I, I also noticed what Kevin Stokes said about, uh, as an aspirational goal of create a village affordability plan, which to me just seems like, yeah. An aspirational goal, I don't, I, I don't imagine that we're gonna be creating a task force on that, I mean, some of our initiatives probably will move as a matter.
Would it help, I mean, is it in any way helpful, if instead of putting leadership team to the side, there are specific staff members, uh, kind of attached to that goal, because, I mean, Amy's sort of identified, I don't quite see myself here, and obviously you'd explain it, but, for example, I don't know that Denise's name would drop into that. So, I mean, if it were more specific, if it were me, I would look at it and go, oh, wow, I'm supposed to keep an eye on that goal, like, it's just a little, leadership team is done.
Yeah, I think that's, and, you know, again, I, I just started playing around with filling in those columns, but the more I think about it, the responsibilities in my mind come into those action plan outlines, um, like, the ones that I did, where I, I tried to think about, like, I think a simple model, and I started to plug in, like, you know, for example, with the, um, the volunteer policy, right? I started to see, like, who had to be engaged in some of those things. So, yeah, I mean, I think that as we actually take on something specific, that would be fleshed out more. But I think, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be hard to capture in, um, the, I guess, uh, high, high-end sheet, high-level sheet. Yeah, Gavin?
So, just big-picture comments, um, you know, I, I made a couple of these in the notes I sent back to the, to the sheet, but the ensure social justice one, it, it feels like there are some, I don't, like, I don't know, fluffy things in there or something?
Yeah.
And then the, so, uh, and then the facilitate active transportation, I, it's totally possible just, I haven't been the, you know, since May, I miss things, but it doesn't, it hasn't felt to me like that's been a thing that's been kinda like rising to the level of, like, the top, you know, one pager, and then it feels like, I know there are some things spread in here, but it does feel like both in the council goals, the times that people communicate about goals, um, that there should be something around infrastructure as like a priority, it feels like it's, you know, it just feels like it's been something that's come up repeatedly, so it might, 'cause I don't, I don't know how to, I, I get that there's gonna be a lot of things that aren't on here, but like, it seems like, if those two came off and that one went on, it would feel like it would get closer to being representative of what the conversation has been about priorities?
What two came off?
The ensure social justice and facilitate active transportation. I'm not, obviously, I'm for social justice and I'm for, but I'm just acknowledging that, like, from a day-to-day, and what seem like their priorities, anyway.
Ensuring social justice starts here. I mean, it, we are to lead by example, and if we're dealing with these issues in this body and on staff, um, you know, that'll, I mean, like, it does, for me, it does sound a little, a little fluffy. Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, can, maybe some of that stuff, if you eliminated the fluff, and you dropped ensuring social justice, not as a, not as a tagline, but it should, it should be in with balanced quality of life, well, I mean, that's what we're talking about, it's just that it might assume quality of life is somebody else, right?
I mean, it is, it's a value more than a goal that we're, we're gonna achieve it in 2023.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, the answer is yes. Well, the strategic paid parking plan, I, I guess, I don't wanna dive into that, I do support that, I'm just, I'll bring it back to, I think it was Marsha that sent the, yeah, sent the email, just wanna be able to get our heads around that, um, and, 'cause there was a lot of bullet points there that, I just wasn't sure how to, how to digest it, like, why do business owners not want this done? I just wasn't sure what's going on there, and, and this is a question, uh, maybe for, for Jose, finalize Dayton, and Johnny, and Royal Street Development Plan, is that mainly from our perspective and infrastructure and sewer and all that, or to what degree does it depend on what our friend Dave does?
I think it's independent of that, we initially started talking about rural development back, right?
Three years ago.
Yeah, three years ago, and we saw an economic development opportunity to make that a mixed-use development, it's not unique to three years ago, there was some effort, ten years, and we had Ted and Now develop a whole concept of multiple buildings for that area, so our version, three years ago, became a modified version, a multi-story mixed-use development, uh, to create more economic opportunities in three different spaces, one being the retail space, professional offices, and residential. Uh, we, we can't, we can't do anything until the stormwater project is done and other utility work is done to make that lot, that lot of a lot, so that's the concept of it. It's modified the last three years, but it's been around for ten-plus years.
Okay. Yeah, actually, um, I mean, I think that property was bought when Laura Perlis was village manager, and, um, and then nothing's happened.
And, and I thought it was a great price, it was a great price, uh, great timing. Do you agree with what Craig has done?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to, to edit my own comment about, like, infrastructure, maybe it could be like, something like, you know, provide building locks for, uh, you know, thriving community or something, I'm thinking about policing, I'm thinking about infrastructure, both, I'm just trying to figure, how do we all, everybody here is, is working, we're all, we're trying to get all on one page, how do we put stuff here where everybody sees themselves here, and recognize that's the foundation of having, that, you know, if we're working on this stuff, you, on an annual basis, that we're all in there.
Yeah, I think, you know, Johnny's made me think about this in particular, and, um, and, you know, I, I want this document to continue to hone in on it, but, you know, I think it was our last retreat, um, where we had a very authentic interaction, um, about needing to have the right infrastructure if we were gonna do more development, residential and, you know, business and whatnot, and so, I mean, I think there's something there in what you're saying, what Johnny said, that could then make all of this a lot clearer, right? So, so I wanna be clear that, I don't think this is a perfect document, but I don't wanna, I guess I don't wanna forget, like, the purpose for why we do this, right? I mean, we, we, we fix our infrastructure because, again, we wanna have that thriving community or whatever, so I, you know, I, I think there's a way to balance those two.
I would add a little bit to that, and I, you know, at the risk of being controversial a little bit, um, finding a place for everyone, Gavin, I, I feel that there's a time we're missing is a champion of a goal, and we've talked about it at the YSDC in, extensively, because the YSDC is having somewhat of an existential crisis, why do they exist? And one of the recurring themes is, you know, the, the lack of a unifying voice or force, you know, the village was built around, a lot of it around Arthur Morgan's vision for community, and he was able to get community member to college and have all these resources, and we could be unified around some, some common goals and values, and I think with, the key to a, a goal sheet is that the sheet itself is, is what helps formulate that common goal vision, and it creates room for everyone, that we all have a seat at the table, we all have a role to play and a way to contribute, and at times we, and this is the controversial part, there, the, the, the champion voice is sometimes lacking, either out of fear for the republic view, uh, retaliation, or just the public criticism that comes with the work, and it, I, and I don't know how, how we work on that, 'cause that's a lot of what gets in the way of us accomplishing a lot of our work, it's, you could, sensitive or react to the noise, and the noise comes from, it comes from, I don't know, I don't know if I can.
It does, I, honestly, I felt, I feel like, I kinda feel like we have too many goals and a lack of clarity as a result, so like, I look at it, like, let's just say we only did trying to figure out facilitate development of affordable market rate housing, that's gonna be like hard, like, we could spend probably all year just on that one, so if I'm being honest, part of the reason I was trying to, like, act some stuff, is 'cause I'm like, let's just get real about, like, how many things can we actually accomplish this year, so, so, I guess so that on some level, there would be more championing possible. Right now, I kinda feel like it's like, everything is a good goal, and trying to say, sorry, like, that one's not gonna happen this year, like, the part, to me, to me, it'll be really interesting if we can get to, like, timeline, like, do we actually have time to address all these things? I don't, I don't think so. So I think I'm with you, that doesn't sound controversial, no?
Yeah, I think a lot of these, um, I'll just continue to use fluffy things, could be pulled out and, you know, sort of like, you know, again, sort of concepts we're, you know, thinking of related to, you know, a higher-level goal, and just like really pare it down to the nuts and bolts, so I, I think that's great feedback, um, and then it would be even more concise and easier to, to work with, so. Okay?
What we, um, at the administration, when we retreat last year, when we were formulating our, our vision, mission, and strategic direction, we aligned your work around two central, two central themes, and one was deliver high-quality service for the well-being of the residents, so that's encompassed our public safety or utility services, um, everything that, that is tangible that we exchange with our residents. The second, uh, theme area was a commitment to make you, the village, a stronger and resilient community. So our work, starting last year, we was orienting in these two themes areas, and that was clear of how our goals, our work, our processes contribute to these two themes. So just some, some, yeah, background information on how we approached it last year, we are going in a retreat, uh, in a couple weeks, and we will continue to find alignments between all the goals that you, that you received from our team into those thematic areas.
Okay. Other comments? Questions?
I, I would just, I too, I read your sheet like Amy did, Denise has done, and I just don't understand some of the goals on there, because some of the goals are what the staff is actually working on, and instead of having them for key actions and future ongoing activities, councils row in, it should be more of supporting the staff on their goals, instead of having the staffing goals on the goals for council for water loss, there's nothing other than supporting public works that council can do for water loss, or for implementing storm policy and stuff like that, policy would come to you, but going out and actually doing the work, but having committees and having council members be a part of the day-to-day operation, then we have too many hands in the fire, and we go to do something, and then all of a sudden, we gotta stop because it didn't go through this person, so, me personally, I'd like to see, majority, I'll only speak for myself, majority of the public works, infrastructure stuff be more of a supported role versus a council goal, because then it kinda muddies the water with, is.
Right, but they're not, they're not council goals.
Well, they're village goals, but I, I think, for me personally, I would love to see that we have council goals and we have staffing goals that may mirror, but they're actually two, because we can check off, and then you guys can check off, and we're going in the same direction, but we don't know who's working on what process.
Right. Well, and that's why water loss is on here, not because any council member's gonna play any role, other than, like, understanding it, and so, I wanna hyperlink everything we actually do to an action plan, right? So if it's water loss, it goes to whatever you put on your sheet, and there's no responsibilities for council or anything like that, other than what you said, all right? So that's, that's the direction that I want us to get to, right? And so, you know, again, so we know Johnny and his team are responsible for that. Okay. So I think we're on, again, I think, it's just shifting our perspectives a little bit, I think we're gonna get closer, um, yeah?
If we had, if this were in color, we could potentially have staff be one color, so for the water loss, maybe there's something that's only council, there's some that are gonna be council and staff together, so that, that might make it a little clearer of who's responsible.
Can I ask a process question, and then I might have a piggyback comment off of what Johnny said, so, so following our meeting today, will, um, a combination of what we presented as staff, and then what we come to, what you guys have come to the table with as a council, will that be meshed together and we'll see a chart that has a, a combination of the goals?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's okay, I just wanna make sure I understood that, I know it was the first few.
Right, so I think, like, I love all the stuff that, I, you know, I agree can come off, right? We streamline it, and then we link to your documents, right, which, you know, are gonna, be developed and whatnot, so, yeah.
Okay, I just, I mentioned that because I just wanted to piggyback off what Johnny said, I think, you know, he kept referring to them as council goals, and he said, well, these aren't council, they're village, we might feel a little bit more like that if we saw our work reflected in the goals.
Right, yeah, so that is, that's, that's what we wanna do. And then, I think also, I mean, this ultimately is our public-facing document as well, right? So I want, I want everybody to know we are working on water loss, right? I, I don't want those to disappear, um, but again, I, you know, I wanna make sure that we're all playing our, our roles, right? And Johnny, you know, you're dead on, that, yeah, we're, we're not gonna get our hands dirty in that way. Okay? Anything else? All right, I'm gonna, I will take a next stab, um, I'll, I'll say one specific thing, that I've already planned to modify with the paid parking solution, is to, uh, reword it as explore and propose, all right? 'Cause one of the things that was helpful for me, when I did write out that action plan outline, right, was just kinda, and thinking about those steps, I mean, I think that's where we're at, you know, this year, right? Explore, propose, um, we're not ready to implement, all right? So, yeah, I don't, I don't know that that was the trigger word, but, um, I think that's the other thing that, that we can be more careful about, and I think that other people are thinking about that, too. Okay? Well, I'm ready to shift into the, uh, the individual stuff if, uh, everybody else is. Okay? So as I mentioned, I wanna go, uh, through a village team member, um, high-level, uh, report outs first. first. And we can just go in the order that Judy listed them. And Amy Kay, you already kinda started, but if you wanna highlight any other things?
No, I mean, the overall goal of the department is clarity, collaboration, communication, efficiency, and, you know, helping to maximize revenue. I mean, you can put all the bills out there in the world and we're not collecting them, it doesn't matter, right? So I think we have a little bit of a rebuild in 2023. Most of the staff in finance departments were in their roles at least. So we're doing some trainings and things like that. I shared with finance this morning. And then I really wanna get a, a master schedule out there that these are the finance goals, these are the finance due dates, not just to you, but to the county, to the state, to, you know, anybody else that has a goal. And then get that budget goal, get those budget dates out there. And we're not gonna be in December grouping the budget. We're gonna be in October and November, because we know in July what revenue we have. So, that's my goal this year, is get us a little more organized in there, timing. So that's, I think I went over the rest of the details.
Okay. Does anyone wanna ask Amy any questions?
Yes. So are you saying that there's a fair amount of thing, revenue owed to us that hasn't been?
No, no, I'm not. Utilities and all that fun stuff is gone, as it should, but there's always gray areas, you know, landlords that let tenants stay in and then won't pay the bill. But we just have to bring to council that next resolution that says we're gonna build a landlord, we're gonna put it on their property taxes, that kinda stuff, which we probably haven't done for two, three years. I don't know how many we have out there, not many. Just little things, little things that we could do to make it more efficient.
So you'll get a request from us for resolutions to go after some of these property items?
Well, we made that a policy several years ago, so it'd be nice to follow through on it. That's great. Yeah, and by the way, you know, I think we had our finance committee meeting this morning, and Amy also highlighted that, that, you know, once we tighten up the ship, there are gonna be revenues that we haven't been actualizing. And so, so there's some good news in getting this all together.
But the revenue that we haven't realized, what, how many digits are we talking about?
No, it's not material. It's not material at all. It's just more process than anything else. It's like, we shouldn't, we spend an inordinate, a ton of time tracking down utility payments, fixing checks that bounce, e-checks that bounce, that kinda stuff. And if we can work through a process where the billing system prints a report, or automate it into the accounting system, then it takes all the human error out of it. And that's what takes us so much time. So I think it's more staff efficiency. And then when we add broadband, stormwater, that kinda stuff on top of it, it's not a person, you know, if we can get that efficiency, so.
Right.
And there was, there was the overpayments thing.
The overpayments, it's our money, it's just not in the right bucket right now. It's not, it's not someone else's money, it's not an error, it's just the process is, it goes in there and no one knows how to get it back out. So that's the next thing on the list, since we're close to twenty-two, is to figure out how to get it back out.
So there's like $230,000 that's like untapped right now? Just, so there's something.
Yeah, that is the biggest, that's the most urgent.
And we know how to get it out, it's just a painful process to.
One person at a time, yeah.
Record, look at every account, look how much credits they withdrew over time, and apply those credits to the right utility. And, and that's what the auditor wants to see. I proposed a plan, they didn't like it, so we have to, they want us to go account my account to justify repentance.
Yeah, so we talked to finance committee, it sounds like on a monthly basis, so other council members are aware in particular, so on a monthly basis, we'll be kinda doing like a budget check-in. We've, it sounds like gotten kind of away from, had gotten away from the quarterly reports in 2022, but now in 2023, we'll try to get back to quarterly reports. So just letting folks know that like, there's gonna be regular checkpoints for how we're doing with our finances in a way that, at least since I've been on since May, it hasn't been happening with regularity. So I think we're on the right track with that. Again, not to be surprised at the end of the year.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy. And great to have you in the mix. All right, Johnny, I think you're up next.
My old boy, where am I starting? First thing I'll have to say is, once we get the full staff on board and somewhat of the trained, we have got a very busy twenty-three, almost all the way through twenty-four with the projects that we have listed. Stormwater, I'll just say that one's, that one's going slower than what we thought. But we're actually ahead of schedule, if you think it started in nineteen-sixties and, you know, we're now getting caught up. So stormwater will be the major one for the next couple of months, but the water line, people will want to come in and start on Houseville one sixty-eight. So we'll have multiple areas toward one time. We are also doing King Street at the same time, but that would probably be towards the end. Water meters, and we should find out in July if we have that grant or not. And then that will be taken off in twenty-four. And then we have, I'm getting back to my computer just a little bit. We have the ongoing stuff, which is the, you know, the valves that we actually found last year that were broke. When we get staff, we'll get them dug up and try to get them replaced. OPWC grant that I had mentioned for the water meters, we have a water tower, RFP out right now for, to be able to get the updated pricing, so then we can either find a funding or, you know, take a loan or something to be able, because we don't want them to go, the water towers can't go past a certain deterioration state, because if they do, then they're required to be completely sandblasted inside and out and start all over again, which doubles the price. So we're right there at the, the cuff of, they need to be done in the next year or so. So we'll find out more after February tenth, when the bids come in. Sewer relining, they did hold their price until June one. So we are in the process of trying to get more camera work done, to be able to submit it, to turn it back around. We cannot get the whole entire village camera, because we don't have that kinda fund. So we're gonna do another large section like we did. We are looking at another manhole company to try to do some more rehab work. A sludge press has been working pretty well. We have a safety issue with, they have to literally drug the power cords out and plug it in. So we're actually gonna underground that this year to take the safety hazard away. Let's see here. Stormwater, we're, we're gonna try to get some more stuff done on our own this year. Try to clean out some swells that we know are overgrown. Streets, the biggest thing we have on streets is the multimodal path that we got three years ago, was it?
Yep.
That actually goes out for sale in May of twenty-three to start construction in June of twenty-three. And that is effective, that will affect the areas on Dayton Street, that affect all the way down to the Bryant Center. It affects some of Zingy Avenue and up by the library. So when we're talking about event planning, and we're talking about different parades, and we're talking about everything else, we have to all keep in mind that we have three large projects going on at the same time. We'll have Houseville one sixty-eight, the Dayton Street Storm, and a multimodal pavilion at the same time. Plus all the construction.
And you say that's gonna start?
It is starting, it is starting in May of twenty-three is what it's scheduled. And then to wrap up, first quarter of twenty-four is what they're saying.
I have a question about the sewer and the camera work.
Yes.
Do you assume or know, I don't know which it is, that the sewer lines that are in most need of repair are in the older section of town, and then less in newer? And so are you mostly cameraing the old or?
We are, we're, we're cameraing, the main thing we're cameraing is where we have the most problems. That has been identified by our cap and other studies that we've done, and the different backups that we have. So we are cameraing, the main thing we did right away is majority of the back right away, where we can't get anything back here to dig up or to explore. So a lot of it has been back right away. This time, it's gonna be, back right away is anything off the roadway. Everything behind the houses, in the backyards. Omar Circle, everything's in the backyard, so you can't get equipment back here. So nothing's in the roadway. So therefore, we had a sewer backup, we had a sewer collapse. We'd have to take down fences and all that, just to get back here. So right now, we are, we got a pretty good location of where we need to go, but we can't get there fast enough. There was one that we was gonna do last year, and when the overdevelopment got taken off, we actually extenuated because it's not a, a rating now, because you can get out there to dig it up. But if it, there was houses in that plat, then we wanna have it cambered and inspected. But we took it off the list, because right now, it's in an open field, and we can get out there and work on it anytime we want to. To go back to the sewer, I actually got a quote today for a portable machine to sit in the back of the truck. And just the machine that we hired to do the work, today's quote come in at eighty-nine thousand dollars. The problem that is, is you still need the staff to be able to work with it daily, to be able to do it. So that's the reason why we hired that part out, because they are, they come in, they do it, they get the quote together. You just can't pay eighty-nine thousand dollars to buy a piece of equipment to sit on a shelf three hundred days out of the year. Next highlighted things would be the electric, we're waiting on to get the study back. Hopefully, it'll be done here in the next couple of months. There are the fused coordination study part of it. And then working on, and I don't think it'd be right at the beginning of the year, but if we can figure out what the schools are doing on Mills Lawn area, then we'd like to try to go get those poles changed out to the underground. If you notice, we have a concrete block holding up one of them, because it's so shallow under limestone. But if we know that the schools are gonna stay, or if we know it's gonna, knows law's gonna be there or whatever, we can actually go and, and put majority, well, put it all underground, fiber, telephone, all the electric, set it up for a street fair to where things are just a plug-and-play kinda deal. There's a big plan that the electric department has for that, but we don't wanna do it. And then all of a sudden, things get changed around, and we don't have that opportunity. I mean, anything that goes down with the transformer that Mills Lawn has, if they change their vaultings, the plan that the guys are working on or had worked on, it started out to winter, you know, so. And I know that there has been talking about changing the vaultings at the school. So, that's about the high level. The biggest concerns that I got is, is, and, and I've talked to Housway about it, is what's the future plan for Lawson Place? Because there's more money to be spent there than we actually get back. And then what is the action plan, or what's the next plans for the old school board building? It is getting instructed tomorrow at one, and then we need to make a decision on what we're doing with it.
Yeah. And it occurs to me that, you know, those are examples of, of places where, you know, council members may be involved, right, unlike, or like all the other things. I also wanna make sure with the multimodal project, that we take advantage of Chris Bonjourneau and, you know, Eric Oberg, and just making, making sure that, because they've seen so many of these projects, and I don't know exactly what's the best way for them to.
It's already, it's already, it's, it's a selling project now. They, they actually, what was used was our active transportation plan to be able to get these. So they have already had all their input. But now it's to the state guidelines, it has to be done to the state guidelines.
And ODOT's handling.
And ODOT's handled one hundred percent of that. We're almost like a hands-off. They come in the final stuff on the approaches and all that, but it has to be to ODOT specs to be able to fund it. But active transportation played a role in getting that.
Right. Okay. So, I mean, everything's said, it's totally out of our hands?
Oh, yeah, it's first said already. It's in the final plans and.
I mean, we're just, we're just providing information at their request.
So does, we, have we seen design and engineering? Okay. Yeah, so that was one of the things, I guess, and maybe this process is gonna help us capture those opportunities, because, I mean, we had talked, I think since we got that money, that we'd use some of that expertise, just to make sure we get what we want. So.
Well, it's designed for the active transportation. So the design come from Yellow Springs. The active transportation had exactly what they wanted. We actually enhanced it with King Street extensions and bump outs, that was also in the plan, the R R F Bs that was in the plan. So the active transportation from the last time's plan went to the state for the grant, and then that's how they developed.
I think the only thing that we changed was the ramps coming on Len Street, limestone?
Yeah, we canceled those.
We, we had the council goals, just because of the grading going down to the bike path, was challenging. The cost figures came back, it was through the budget.
Well, you know, it was a one, one point eight million dollar grant, and if we were gonna do that, it, they weren't gonna give us any more money than that. And it was, yes, so that's why it was canceled.
Yeah, so we, we took that piece off because of the cost. Everything else is in the design as it was designed in the active transportation plan.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, just keep in mind that, I mean, that was a concept. And, I mean, I, you know, I hope that, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna trust, I'm gonna, I think ODOT does great work. But I guess when those kinds of projects where I think we do have local expertise that really matters, if there, we should find opportunities just to.
Yeah, this was just not one of those. Because ODOT, we even had, who we wanted as the engineering firm, they picked it. We didn't, we didn't get that. We didn't, we weren't, you know, we were pretty upset, actually, because the engineering firm really helped play a role in us getting the grant. And then they were chosen, and that was all on ODOT. And it's one hundred percent funded by ODOT, so.
Right. And, and the other thing with the active transportation plan, they'd already done the accident studies and all that. So that all went to CMT, which is the engineering firm.
Cool.
All right, yeah, Gavin. Just a quick question about all these things. So there's so much great information here in the goals of what people are working on. Is this stuff, stuff that would go in the annual report, like in terms of things that are coming up in twenty-three? I'm just thinking about like, how do we get this out to the public? Are there ways that we're sharing this, these things out? I don't know who that question's for, but.
One way that we're gonna do it is, we're gonna make this a, a document that's live on the website and direct people to that. But I think we need to do other things as well. Okay. All right, Chief Burge, I think you're up next. Thanks, Johnny.
All right. So from a high-level perspective, we identified our three big goals last year. And the way that we run our goals for the police department are, in three-year increments, are the high-level goals. So you'll see that recruit, retrain, reward, retain, establish meaningful, community-based initiatives, and the data collection transparency. Those are commitments or goals that we created in twenty-two that will run through twenty, I suppose twenty-five. What changes is the specific nature of each of those. So those being the high-level goals. From year to year, as we accomplish things, the specificity, or the specific category that you see there will change based on what we need to move into twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and so on and so forth, to accomplish in those vague categories. So you guys can take a look at that, that document at your leisure, if you haven't already, to see some of the things we'll be working on in twenty-twenty-three. Just know that the emphasis is on recruitment, retraining, rewarding, retaining, establishing meaningful, community-based initiatives, and data collection and transparency. The second document I provided you guys was after I took a look at your, or I'm sorry, our goals, the village goals, how I felt they tied into my existing goals. And then just some general commentary on where I'd like to see some more information about my, my staff's involvement and some of the things that were highlighted. So to go over that really quickly, I pulled out two specific things that I thought were obviously specific to our department. Structurally balanced budget, we had pursuing grants for low-interest loans. You'll see that I highlighted below, a special assignment that has been recently given down to one of our officers for grant acquisition. to one of our officers for grant acquisition and research. So he'll be partnering specifically with me and the administrative staff to educate himself on where to find grant opportunities, what needs done, what can be funded with our agency, and then again partnering the admin team, including myself, to pursue those opportunities. The implement strategic parking plan, you'll see here, I added, this would require officer availability, so obviously I was highlighting a concern here. So dependent on staffing would be our involvement, because obviously our involvement with strategic parking plan would be after the implementation. So after the implementation, the enforcement aspect would need, need personnel, and then obviously personnel for the data collection, which would be pertinent to making sure that we're enforcing at peak times of the days, peak days of the weeks for the maximize, to maximize enforcement efforts. Department size, obviously we've had much discussion about that, and we'll have continued discussion about it. I highlighted a few things there, just reiterating that we're at minimum staffing levels now. Anything less than that would require us to go with no coverage during specific times of the day and year.
Or coverage through the county, is that right? No coverage or, or forward, then at that point, Green County would come in?
Yeah, that's, that's actually something that we're going to explore. So I think it's been common for folks to just believe that, oh, if we don't, if you don't have a police department or an officer, the county just comes in and be covered. And just loosely, and I'm, I'm still gathering a lot more information, so I don't want to necessarily speak out of turn here, it does not sound like that's the case. You actually have to contract with the county to provide those services, is what it sounds like, so. But I have meetings slated for the very near future to get more information and bring back to you guys about them. So returning to that specific topic, having the minimum staffing levels, so no reduction, just status quo, would essentially provide the ability to have an officer available to respond to calls for service, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five, and that's one, and then allowing that officer to complete necessary follow-up, and I, I highlighted some of that follow-up work here. So to move into that second goal, I thought was pertinent to the department, which is obviously ensuring social justice. You've got highlighted improving data gathering and performance evaluations, the CRB, this, this, this village mediation, and supporting awareness activities. So this lines up with obviously my third bullet point or my third overarching goal, which is data collection and transparency. Had a lot of success in twenty-twenty-two with moving towards more evidence-based policing practice. We've done that through data collection and gathering, so we'll continue those efforts. I also highlighted under that bullet point, though, that's also very contingent on staffing availability. Got to have the staff to pull the data, to do the stuff. Piloting the community citizen board, I wanted a little bit more information on that. This is the first time I've really seen it being proposed through village mediation, so I was kind of interested in what that looked like, if we know what it looks like or if that's just kind of a little big picture perspective right now. We've, we've done some work with village mediation over the last year, and we've implemented some of the work we did at the end of twenty-twenty-two, at the beginning of twenty-three, to try to improve our relationship there and ensure that we're getting as many referrals from the police department to village mediation. I think if anyone talks to Diane, she'll probably reiterate these, these thoughts, but she's probably seen more referrals than she's ever seen before from the police department, which I think is a good thing, so. So, yeah, I just would like some more information about that and what that looks like and how we can be of assistance, what do we require from staff, please let that, I'm not sure.
Sure, because I have a little information.
Sure.
So while this was a proposal that Lisa Krieger and I had made five years ago or so, to have sort of pilot project utilizing a village mediation. Village mediation does not know anything about this. I mean, I sent an email yesterday, I guess, to the steering committee that know that this was a proposal. So if, which is not to say that the mediation program wouldn't be interested, probably there would be interest, but it's being posed by Brian, whoever proposed it without checking, without notifying mediation program department, so, so it'll be a conversation.
So there is, but there is a background document that we can share with you, which you wrote, so.
Yeah, but I, that was like five years ago.
Oh, yeah, whatever you guys got, just want to take a closer look at it. And that last bullet point there, so supporting awareness raising activities, this falls in line with our establishing meaningful community-based initiatives. We obviously made substantial efforts in twenty-two to establishing meaningful community-based initiatives. With your support of the therapy dog program, we're hopeful to move forward with that in twenty-three, safety village in twenty-three, and we had success with drug takebacks, donuts with COFs programs, and educational campaigns in twenty-two. So we'll continue to move towards the twenty-twenty-two established initiatives and then working towards acquiring funding for some of the twenty-twenty-three initiatives, so happy to feel any questions or any comments.
All right. Any other questions for Paige? Great. All right, Denise, I think you're up next.
Okay, so the big one for me obviously is the replacement person. That's, we're hoping to hire that person by April first, to be, actually begin by May first. And then zoning code amendments with this zoning group, you know, I left, I did let planning commission know this wasn't going to be a complete overhaul, just tweaking it, so we're going to hear from them at the next meeting coming up on the February fourteenth.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, happy Valentine's Day. And then we're, and then I would like to see that get wrapped up or very near completion before I leave, because I really not want to throw a new person into that. And then my part-time employees could be out for a little period of time here during this time period that I'm still here. So for me, it's just maintaining everything, the zoning, the building department, keeping everything going. And just trying to get everything organized for the new, new hire in my position, understanding where I keep everything, and that'll be part of that training process, because over the eight years that I've been doing this, I've created a lot of templates, so it'll, hopefully it'll be easier for people. It's based off of the zoning code itself, but.
Great.
Pretty much it.
And Denise, so you are wrapping things up.
My last day will be June thirty-first.
December thirty-first, twenty-thirty.
Okay, good, that's, that's what I like to hear. Okay, so it is.
I want to add it there.
I know.
I mean, actually, not great, but.
I know, but.
But I'm glad you're going to be here.
How fast time goes by, so, you know.
Well, that onboarding is going to be so important, so.
Yes, very much so.
Cool. Questions or comments for Denise?
Well, I guess it's not maybe for Denise, but when do we plan on boosting that position?
About, yeah, I've, I've got to get the job description figured out here, probably mid February.
Take your time.
I can put it together. Denise Swinger.
You've got the perfect candidate.
Yeah, so, yes, because, you know, I, 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 we just need to get it advertised and see what comes in.
Okay. All right.
Now, we're doing some active recruits, so we got our eyes on a few folks.
Good.
So we may ruffle some feathers around, around the areas.
All right. Let's not ruffle too many, but, all right, I think you're up next.
Okay, I shared a document with you guys. It's a long list of a lot of things that are pressing. We've got some data technology management work that we need to do, some of it is connected with, I think affects other folks' work, but I also see this enabling work. Just an example, a couple of years ago, we set up, we set up a SharePoint platform for environmental commission, and they got used for some time and then they got dropped. But I think continuing to build our knowledge base and make it back to the successful, everyone to be available for the women hats, are how readily available information is in one decision. For us as a, as an organization, as the employees, we need robust data and technology systems, also where we do our work, not just in the data, equipment, and phones, but also our accounting system. One of the things that we started to look at last year was having a budget analytics and preparation module on our system, so how we looking to get that module implemented. And we've got a lot of communication relationship management, our goals, among them is, you know, you already said how I want a new website. We looked at different vendors locally and all of our local resources, they just can't take us on as, as a customer. Big Design and someone else who had wins, something, so we're, we're, we're going to have to hire somebody from outside of the village to remap our website. Among those communication relationship, we're looking to, me, my work establishing that housing committee, because I think one of the things that I've highlighted, started highlighting last year is the need for us to play more of a housing development role, to bring about housing units in the village. Yeah, just looking at new opportunities. Obviously, we, we, we have great internal resources to deliver concepts. I hope that you see that in the work in twenty-twenty-two, that we were able to negotiate things and get, get a great concept developed, you know, that's about internally. Environmental commission has been somewhat of a, of a challenge for me personally, so looking to reengage in that work and avoid some of the conflicts and improve collaboration. One of the things I'm looking to, we structure manager report to have links, hyperlinks, or another directing where data sets and other information lies for those information that may be discussed at that time. HR services, we've got a lot of work to do on HR services. Lawson Place, I know a lot of folks were, were expressing different views on the Lawson Place. We have engaged Green Metropolitan Housing on a potential partnership, and looking to further develop that, that model or find a better way to integrate services, Lawson Place. My dream is still that Lawson Place will become a cooperative. I haven't reengaged the new tenants of Lawson Place to see the feasibility of that, but that would allow us to have tenant-led initiative, but we'll continue a multi-pronged approach to that. Housing developments, I've identified four areas there in the report that will be development concepts that we worth pursuing. I still left the Bill Duncan site on there because Brian and I had a conversation with the property owner, and they left the door for us to explore partnerships. Obviously, economic development piece, I, I mean, we have railroad that I think we need to dedicate time this year to develop. Robin is a key element of our economic development strategy. We've identified, we have built out infrastructure to be able to connect our four hundred and ten business and homes, which are more than the pilot project of two fifty, and that would give us a good revenue base to expand the program, seek grant opportunities, or even borrow, borrow money to expand the program. Then I included a piece about our strategic development orientation and direction, that's the, what's, what's the framework that's going to drive our strategic planning sessions in the coming week to align our team's goals. Any questions?
Really quickly regarding Lawson Place, so it was my understanding from GMHA, working Section Eight specifically, that if someone participates, so a resident that participates in the Section Eight program cannot participate in a co-op housing model. So if that's the case, I guess my next question would be, if it becomes a co-op, you know, what would that look like for the tenants that are on Section Eight?
Yeah, we would have to explore that further, but the limitation is, a Section Eight boundary recipient cannot also be a property owner or shareholder of the corporation, so they couldn't lease to themselves, which both would happen if they were members. But that would not prohibit for a Section Eight tenant, so the cooperative can lease those units to the tenant, actually, they're paid, so they don't have to be kicked out, they just want the shareholder.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Housway?
Yeah. So, I don't know, is there, I guess this is partly for you, Housway, but partly for you in terms of the rest of the team too, and then I guess council also. So like, there's a lot of stuff on here, is there like, is there a time at which we check back? Is that something like in terms of our role as council, working with you, is, is this like something that you want us to be, you know, communicating with you about? There, there's a number of things on here that I, like, to the point that came up in the very beginning around like clarity of, of goal, so let's take the cooperative, just talk about it. There was some, you know, disagreement or some lack of clarity around that when it came up earlier this year. So I can see there being things on here where like, do you want us to help give clarity on whether or not these are things that there are? And or like, how or when would there be interplay between what your goals are and how we want to work together?
On that particular topic, I envision us following a similar model as last year. When we gauge interest of the individuals for cooperative, I invited Mary Yan and Carmen to the tenant meeting, and it was a tenant meeting, we talked about operations and talked about what's the future of, of the building. So we approached it as, I mean, we're thinking about this, and we brought the lawyers in, and at that time, most of the folks, they said, we are happy that you bought the building, we want you to be our forever member. You guys agree with that?
Well, maybe without digging in too deep, this will definitely be part of the evaluation process, right, where we've got the goals that we agree on, and so, so I think that's, that's one place where there's going to be that interplay. And then I think Lawson Place again is an example of where we need some kind of action plan out on, and, and I think there'll be council members and staff involved in that. So, so I think those are two places where some of that can be worked out and discussed. Okay. Anything else? All right, I think we are hopping over to Gab. So, so we're going to prioritize the written reports and then see what's left.
So, I mean, I think we all did this a little differently, so I, I was trying to present what I thought was the information. At our last council meeting, we had talked about following up on the public safety committee stuff, so, I mean, it's basically a copy and paste, and I just highlighted the one piece that was not a copy and paste from the final version. So I, hopefully, points one essentially, you know, are relatively clear in terms of setting up a committee and then setting a council rep to talk about the merger idea. And then these, several of these things, utility rates, achieving structural balance with budget, I was just trying to say, hey, these are things that I feel like ought to be, you know, they, they seem like they are topics that we need to address. So I don't, I'm not sure that they require looking into them anymore, other than that we're working on it. I guess I'll flag the few that I don't see as clearly on the goals that I think, you know, I guess I wonder like where there's, not where or where, it's a where and whether, like, I'm not saying these things all ought to be on the top goals, I'm just throwing it out there as things that I think we should consider. So this discuss, this discussion around growth, I think, I feel like there should be some, some place to have some perspective on that, sort of toward that point of like having clarity of what it is that we want to see happen. Solar seems like this thing that's come up, but I don't know if it, remember if it landed on this, on the goals documents, or just flagging that it seems like it's still something I were thinking about. The recs piece, yeah, and then the only other thing I just, again, I don't know if this was the right venue to share this, but just from like a process standpoint, I guess my hope is, is that we come up with goals, that we're prioritizing them, and then that we're doing an agenda planning, and that we're looking at the things that are on the list, and then if somebody wants to bring something up that's not on the list, that there's some kind of. And then if somebody wants to bring something up that's not on the list, that there's some kind of check and balance of like, that I, basically I was tracking our time last year, you know, over this last year. And we lose by far the most time in meetings on things that didn't have Meadows or didn't have crap, things that were brought, added to the agenda that were not on the agenda before. And, and then on things that are, might have been on the agenda, but I don't think they were sort of in line with any goal. Like it was like a presentation or something. I'm not saying we shouldn't do any presentations or we shouldn't do any other conversations. But I think there might be something to be said of if we have a set of things that we want to focus on, that only if, like, I don't know how you prove it exactly, but just if something rises to a level where it's like, yes, we really need to talk about that, that it gets bumped above standing focused on the things that we agree we're trying to work on. So maybe that's like a process and goal, like something like that.
Yeah, I think it ties into the second half of today as well, so.
Anyway, I mean, there's a few other things I've looked at, but that's a summary or a list of them down, I guess.
Cool. So I think, you know, this is to me, you know, one where, cause I, I see two kind of main paths, I guess, right? You know, so there's, there's again, like the, the stuff that pretty much is all staff, right? And we wanna know what's going on and, you know, we wanna be able to share all that great work. And then there's, you know, like things like the public safety initiative, right? Where I think we've got like some good steps, need to think about timelines, maybe more concretely, think about who's gonna be in the responsible category and involved. There's some obvious people. But that would be my one thought in, you know, sort of making sure that these things are gonna happen. So, great. Questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Gavin. Mary Ann?
So I made comments based on the categories that were included in our strategic goals. So the first is about housing. I think that, well, I think council itself, with the support of staff, needs to decide if we're going to be a housing developer and what that means, how much of a housing developer we're gonna do that. I also think we need to decide, do we wanna own housing? For example, do we wanna own Lawson Place? I, my personal opinion is that a co-op is not the best thing for Lawson Place. I'd actually say portable apartment unit and I'm not sure that we should continue to own it. But at any rate, I, I want to see a pro forma that shows how we put in and project to income expenses on that. I think probably we need some type of committee or task force to look at housing and include these questions to analyze the village's role in housing development as well as place, as well as, I've mentioned homing in particular, but other. I had included the past goals for village government, but they aren't on the table now. So what I would like from council members and staff to review them to see if there are any differences. Cause I wanna have them on an agenda at council. And what those goals are, are part of the sort of the larger community-based climate action and sustainability planning goals. And they, for the village government, only take in, I shouldn't say only, they are affirming what we are already doing or say we wanna do. So it's not, nothing new added. It's just putting it down in writing, which has a lot of benefit when we start looking for grants in particular. But it also helps us to know what we're doing. The main thing I have suggested in the budget is that senior staff play a primary role in some way with the finance committee. Because what I'm concerned about as council looks at achieving a balanced budget, we, council will make that decision, but it doesn't affect our lives, it doesn't affect our jobs. And so I don't wanna get into this negative relationship with staff of like feeling like council is doing stuff to staff. I think, Pete, staff needs to be involved in looking at the budget because staff, you all are the ones that are living in and it's your jobs and your team and your people. So however that would happen, that staff is involved in, not just sort of at the end of the year creating a new budget, but really looking at it throughout the year. I think, Chief, you were doing that in your report. I really support from your broadening and I really think it's important for me as a council person, for council, to see what is the plan. And I think maybe Osway has it in, you have it in your head. And I guess Springsnet has had some plans, but I think it's important for village government as a council member to see what that plan is, what, what's the role of plan. One thing I wanted to mention about the climate action sustainability plan, we have now, now have a chosen our coordinator, who's Martina. And a unique feature, I think, is that township is part of this. And most of the big cities that have climate action plans are not including, you know, they don't have a rural component. And there's a potential in our plan to create a model for smaller communities, which I'm also hopeful, creating a model will also help us acquire, acquire funding for that. I mentioned this non-point source implementation strategic plan, which has been approved in the sense that now the village can go for particular grants for stormwater, for that, for Ellis Pond remediation, some other things. We'll be getting more information about that. And I guess that, we all already mentioned the thing about the remediation program, possibly working with some kind of citizen to review work. And I do think it's important that we publicly recognize that it would appear that we are not going to move forward with the plan that was developed essentially by 365. And I think it's important to say that. And I don't think it has any sense. So I think we need to talk to that and say we're gonna do something else when we're looking at this.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Regarding the CRB plan, I don't think that it's, I don't think that it is an either/or thing, especially given the work that 365 did and other organizations in the community. I don't think it's an either/or thing.
Do you think it is that?
I think that it's a, it's, it, I think that in order to honor the work that, that, that people did, it's important that we make it a collaboration. I don't think that, I don't, I don't think that, I think that saying that it's an either, either/or doesn't acknowledge the work that 365 and other nonprofit organizations and, and town did.
I know.
So it's gotta be a collaborative thing.
But I think we're just, to me, it looks like we just shoved it under the carpet.
Right. So again, again, what I will, I will, I will restate that I don't think it's an either, an either/or. Whether, what it looks like and what it has the potential to be are two different things. And to say that it's, you know, we're just not gonna honor that work, it's to me kind of, it's, I don't know, I don't think it's, I don't know, like I said, I think it's more accurate to say that it's gonna be a collaborative venture.
Yeah, maybe that's a good segue into what I put in the package. All right. Because I think that, you know, we've talked about accountability, transparency, tracking. So I really wanted to come at this in a way of kind of thinking about, if we wanna get something done, you know, specifically on some of these projects where I think there, it involves everybody on the team. And so hopefully everyone's looked at this because what I think I'm interested in is, if anybody sees any immediate feedback about how to make this kind of template better, you know, I welcome that now and always. But I'll just start with, and then Carmen, happy for you to jump in on the facilitating volunteerism piece. And so, you know, notice what I tried to do was match it with something on the goal sheet. Based on everything I've heard, I'm gonna try to take all the work that everyone's done and see, you know, how we can align in that way. But, you know, when I started to think about, okay, what are the steps that we need to take to get something like this, which is, I think, pretty straightforward, right? I mean, we've got all the pieces, we just haven't like pulled it all together, right? And so to me, it seemed like in a fairly short period of time, we can finalize that waiver. So I put that down for February. I mean, it's basically, you know, Amy B's done work. I think Carmen's got some input on it, maybe some areas to simplify. But I put, you know, our solicitor, I put Carmen as the lead. I mentioned in a note below that I'm happy to contribute if I'm needed, but I'm not sure I am. Osway's obviously gotta be in the mix because you're gonna be coordinating. And then I put Johnny's name because I think a lot of these volunteer activities have to do with our, our public property, right? And so, you know, things like, since this came up in the context of Ellis Pond, I, I think you weighing in, Johnny, makes sense, right? So in my mind, it doesn't mean that, you know, everyone's got a ton of work or whatever, but these are, to me, the minimum sort of eyes that need to be on it, all right? And remember, it still comes to council, right? So we ultimately all get to see it in case there's anything else we notice. So then I thought the next step was we gotta have a policy, right? So we've gotta like have sort of like, all right, so I wanna, you know, rake the pond, how do I go about doing that, right? And that kind of ties into a process as well, right? So there's this kind of policy level, like, you know, what kinds of things, maybe you're don'ts, I don't know. You know, again, I haven't like thought through that. And I thought that was kind of the same team process, same kind of idea. I started to flesh that out a little bit, but, and so then it comes to council, of course. And that's why I thought, you know, like it makes sense for the council lead and our village, and our clerk to put that together. Then we vote on it, we have a council resolution, we're done. And so I believe that we could complete this by March 20th. Won't take a lot of time, in my mind, and just making sure the right people are involved.
So I thought about it in almost the opposite way.
Okay.
So what I thought about first was drafting a volunteer policy. By looking at other models, I mean, this probably is in the area, we have it. It's probably a matter of scaling it down so that it fits with our population and the things that we need to do. Obviously, we're not gonna have people that are, I don't know, whatever, just so, so we could scale it down. So drafting the policy first and then in that policy, what the volunteer process looks like. Hey, this is where I wanna, you know, is there an opportunity for me to volunteer here? Name the, name the places where it's possible for people to volunteer, right?
Yep.
And then the process for each, like I wanna, I'm a vet and I wanna mow, you know? Where does this person go? And then finalizing the waiver. The one we have is kind of modeled after, after Centerville's. And it's good, I mean, obviously it's good, it's good enough for Centerville. But we need to think about what we wanna do with a background check piece. We need to think about, is that gonna be an FBI, BCI, county, like state thing? Or is it gonna be local? Is it gonna be great county? If someone that's lived here forever and worked in the community, ex-school teacher at the high school and wants to volunteer, I don't think that making it an FBI, BCI thing is really necessary. And also that would offset some of the cost because it's expensive to get to, it's expensive to do that.
So I love that.
Yeah.
Okay. And so to me, and this is why it's nice to, you know, we didn't get a chance to meet, you know, and that, which, which is cool.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's, this is exactly like, I felt like, I mean, we've been talking about this a lot. We've been thinking about it a lot, or at least we have. And so then it probably took me 15 minutes to type this out. And then now we have a conversation, shuffle it around, I love what you said. And so, yeah, I, I agree with all that and I would say, go for it. And, and again, I mean, you know, obviously we want council to agree that, you know, and, and this is again where the goal sheet comes in, that we're all on board with doing this, it seems like we are. And so then it should be okay for Carmen and myself to pick it up and, and make it happen, right? And then again, with the caveat that, you know, if it looked to Osway and the team like, whoa, that's, you know, we just don't have time to do that, you would let us know. But I, I'm guessing a lot of the, you know, the nuts and bolts is, is Amy, actually, Amy B. And then, you know, we need to inform some of the guidelines around policy and whatever. But I think this is how we start to just make these things happen. All right.
We need to drill in a little bit on the background check. There's a lot more discussion to have there about what
Right, which.
software we use and how we can tailor it.
Yeah. And then all that will happen in, you know, these groups or whatever. And, and that can all be reconfigured. Yeah.
The only thing I'll say is if you're talking about using that, you asked about, you know, structural. So like, if I look at this, I'm like, it says three, you know, four people are the responsible. And it's like, who's actually like, who's gonna be the bottom liner?
Okay.
There are tools, like there's Mocha and Darcy and there's other ones that are like acronyms about splitting up who's like the, you know, who's consulted and who's the owner and all this kind of stuff. So there's, if you wanna use a template like this for things, there are longstanding examples that are, you know, widely utilized.
Yep. I think that's a great suggestion, you know, right? So there could be like, you know, there's like sort of one person in particular or whatever. You know, I'm like open for any sort of tweaking. But I do think this is something straightforward, allows for accountability, allows for us to track. And I welcome, yeah, so I think that's a great point. And probably in this case, I mean, if Carmen would be that sort of person to make sure that the, the meetings are happening and so forth. Okay. Did you have a lot, Osway? Okay.
So Brian, I think you're suggesting that we would take other things in this goal, let's say housing, which is gonna be more complicated. But an action plan could be created. I'd be happy to help create an action plan. We come to council with a proposed action plan or maybe first, let's, let's say if it were Osway and Gavin. I'm just saying, let's say we were creating an action plan. So we would sort of run it by staff and whomever, and then we bring it to the council. This is what we're proposing as an action plan and a timeline.
Right.
These are the people, this is the restructure, this is the timeline.
Yep.
Get any council buy-in.
That's what I think. And, and yeah, and Gavin, I know you have a lot more experience with these things. I don't know, you know, I just kind of organize it my way, but I'm happy for other. So then I, I'm not gonna, cause we're gonna stop in three minutes. But, you know, you look at my proposal around like how we get to a proposal for a paid parking solution. So I, I had more thoughts about this one because I've been thinking about it for probably five years and we've talked about it for a lot longer. But again, I kind of thought about, you know, what steps I think we need to take to get to a proposal that comes before council, which again, like within, I'm sure there'd be lots of public participation. But I was very, you know, specific about things like, yes, of course, we will talk to stakeholders, right? We will not just sort of like say, okay, we're doing this and we're not taking in any input. And part of why I started to elaborate in the notes part a lot more was because I also am starting to think about what that white paper looks like and some of the things that I wanna address. Lot of this stuff needs to be researched more, needs to, you know, get more feedback or whatever. I know better minds can figure out how we solve the Tom's Market parking lot issue. I know better minds can figure out how we solve the Tom's Market parking lot issue, which is already an issue, and I understand could be exacerbated with doing this, I mean, yeah, but I don't think that means that we shouldn't explore and propose these things, especially because it all comes back to, we got to look at how we have a sound budget.
So I, I'm going to get very specific about this particular proposal. I would do the key stakeholder thing first, and I would throw a pretty wide net, so that whatever the issues get identified and put up in front before putting energy into, and then those issues would be part of what putting energy into the plan would be, how to deal with those issues.
I think that's good feedback. I mean, and I guess this is one where, you know, like you said, you know, you bring the action plan, outline to council, but I think there's also some need to structure those conversations, because from everything I've learned in the past tries, it's just been, I don't think anyone wants to go back and just have another exercise like they did before. So I think we've learned a lot, I think we can have some upfront information, and then that can be revised. But, but I think that's good feedback. It's 3:55.
You have a, a note in your submission saying it'd be helpful to have another council member, and I would be happy to be that person.
Excellent. Okay. All right. I think this was a great discussion, it's really helped me think about how we present all this material better. I appreciate all the work that everyone's done, and let's take a 15-minute break.